Good evening. Being February 27, 2020, this is the Acushnet planning board. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Make a motion, we open.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being audio and videotaped for a master general law. Gentlemen, you be kind enough to introduce yourselves, starting with Rick.
Rick Ellis.
And we're young town planner.
Brian DeChamps.
Bill Malo.
Boxer Rizio. With that, are we 6:45? We will stop the administration stuff and go right into the public hearing. I apologize for being late, it was my fault. Public hearing, Form C, Peckham Road, Joshua Rudolph, Mr. Romanelli, Zan Lanzerviers. You want to talk on that one, Henry?
Sure. We have to cancel this public hearing inadvertently. There was an error in the notification of the Butters. And it was, the error was on the part of the town, in no way was it on the part of the developer. And we apologize to them for any delays and appreciate their patience. So we will have to...
Open the public hearing?
We won't open this public hearing. What we need to do is reschedule the public hearing. We have to re-advertise and re-notify the Butters. It's important that, you know, from a legal standpoint, that all the Butters are properly notified. So that is my recommendation.
Can we set another time for another meeting?
Absolutely, I'm gonna do that right now. What, today is the 27th? Drawing of the date in preference to you?
No, but I'm curious how much time is gone or how much time is...
We need two weeks to do this?
The assessor's office is gonna need to prepare it again.
I think in very short order, they can do that.
So it needs to run two consecutive weeks, so I would say the sooner the better for us.
Sooner the better.
Well, today is the 27th. You'd have to go two weeks.
Third or fourth week.
Yep, is the 13th or the 20th?
By the 13th, probably not. We get two consecutive weeks.
27, okay. 19th, is 2020?
Two weeks and the 12th.
Because I have, yeah, March 12th to March 19th will be Thursday.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be the 19th, that's enough time to get emailing though.
Yeah, because you'd have to get up, you'd have to get the 6th and the 13th, can we do that?
All the Butters need to be notified again?
Yes.
Even though they've been notified?
That's right. There's a plaque along by the assessor's office, that's why we have to do it, because all the people were... One of the, it was a mistake, we all make mistakes, we're all human. So this is why we have to do this.
I'm sorry, I got the 5th. The 5th, the 12th, and the 19th.
I think the two weeks, because it's so close, not well. Can we jam it to 12th? 27, one week, 12 is the second week. Would have to be the 19th.
Yeah, I think it's probably safer, yeah.
I agree.
6:45? We'll do it, okay? Same thing. You better, I apologize, but...
We're gonna do it. Let's go with that one.
So you made the motion that we...
I will make the motion that we schedule the hearing for the 19th of March.
Correct, and we'll make it 6:45 PM. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, we apologize.
This time if it doesn't get done, we'll blame it on Henry. You can slash his tires on the way out.
That's Buckwheat, Henry.
While we're waiting for our next public hearing at 7 o'clock, I can't do it before 7 o'clock, so let's try and do some...
Yeah, that was a quick one. You don't hit to a ball like that, right?
I don't know when it's the 2020. I don't know if you gentlemen...
What was the, what was the reason for that again? Why was it going forward?
Uh, clerical.
No, 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 I mean, what was it for? I don't want people to be waiting for it to happen if it's not gonna happen tonight, that's all.
Uh, the first public hearing?
Yeah.
Peckham Road, Joshua Rudolph, John Romanelli, Zan Lanzerviers.
Is anybody here for the Peckham Road project? Okay. I just didn't want you guys to sit there waiting for something to happen that was not gonna happen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Minutes of January 16th and February 20th, 2020. Have you gentlemen had the opportunity to read the minutes?
Make the motion, make the set.
Zero seconds. Second, all in favor?
Oh, good in the hood.
Item number two vouchers.
You working on that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I do. I do, yeah.
Did the guy have to sign these vouchers for a wonderful paper? Item number three is mail.
It was gonna shut down for 900 times, unbelievable. Nothing has worked right now.
Uh, let's see. Don has got him here, no money for this library, rules and records of the state, $472. Guess we don't have enough money where that'd be...
Where's 1050 Main Street?
Bull yourself.
What's that?
Bull you.
Another razor, way up in the back there. Almost across from Leo's, not quite.
Oh, okay.
You want it back there?
No, it's at the bottom of the back there. Oh, okay. That's sensitive.
Yep. See Rochester, going for the appeals, off the line.
Put those pounds on both. There you go.
Chase Road. We've got the, uh, Michigan company head coach, Rochester, Rochester.
Who'd be saying from, um... This is the name of the, I'm very sure it's the Smenies on the subdivision. I drove up there and it looked like the pavement was all in. They had it, they had it chained off, but...
Makes no sense. Muni's, you need this Muni's thing, Henry? Finance, we also refinance as well?
Does the purchase of a photocopy or a copier, does that have to go on the town meeting agenda for our budget?
Let's see, if we want to update, we can do that later. Discuss the voting terms of advertising the wheel ads. Want to do that at the end too, Henry?
Yes, sort it together.
Town meeting set for Monday, May 11th, 7:00 PM at Ford Middle School. Deadline for submission of articles for approval by selectmen, March 10, 2020, by noon. And possible discussion for a new copier, absolutely, whatever you want.
Put it on the budget for next year.
As far as the town meeting, I would like to, you know, speak with Mr. Ellis about the zoning bylaw we discussed the last time regarding common driveways and the potential to modify that for the purpose of clarity. It's, has caused a bit of confusion, and I think we really need to make sure that other departments completely understand the intent of that, that bylaw.
Okay. Is it something that needs a change, that town meeting?
Yes, perhaps.
Could you?
Possibly.
I would say, you know, at this point, you put together a draft.
Right.
Modification, let's, you know, we'll do that, we'll advertise it and have a hearing and see where we go from there.
Right.
Need a motion for that?
We do.
Zero motion.
Make a motion that we have our town planner put together a draft modification for the common driveway special permit. I suppose we can have that, can we, how soon do we need to have the...
Next meeting.
I think we can have it for next meeting, there's enough time.
Okay, can we put that? I would also make the motion that we put it on the agenda for our next meeting on the 19th, is that the right? For 7:30.
Now we have to do it, we'll put it on as administrative, we don't need a special article for that one. We'll put that under, uh, administrative stuff, right? We don't need that.
Well, we're supposed to have a public, supposed to have a public...
We have to have a public hearing for a bylaw.
Public hearing for a bylaw review.
Okay, so put that in the paper too?
Yes.
We'll make that at 7:00, is that okay, Rick?
Yeah.
If I can just add that, if we, you and I could put together a draft that we can submit, they need a, a draft by March 10th.
I'd say, just make me a photocopy of the, of the current motion, but we don't have a photocopy of it.
We got the old, you know, that kind of used to crank up like this and come across, a little mimeograph machine? It's carbon paper?
I just, I just cleaned out a unit, and there was an old Hamilton Beach grinder. It looked like it maybe only been used twice, the cord was still all wrapped up the way it came from the factory. So we'll put that next to the mimeograph machine as a, as a decoration.
So if we could submit a draft by March 10th, which is before our meeting, that's, that's okay to submit a draft? We'll have the public hearing on the next day.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? With that, it being 7:01 and a half, public hearing, solar special permit and site plan review, 1050 Main Street, Acushnet Solar, I think I have to read something here, hold Okay, Acushnet Planning Commission, notice of public hearing, site plan review and solar permit, 1050 Main Street, map seven, lot 24 and lot 24B of Acushnet Solar LLC. Notice is hereby given that the Acushnet Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the planning office, 130 Main Street, Piding Way, second floor. This meeting is being held in process and application for a site plan review and special permit for solar array at 1050 Main Street, proposed by Acushnet Solar LLC. The engineer is SciTech. The plans and the accompanying documentation may be viewed at town clerk's office, 130 Main Street, Piding Way, first floor during regular business hours in the paper of February 13th and the 20th. Gentlemen from SciTech, please, oh, it's Steve, yeah, from work.
Trying to keep you on schedule tonight. For the record, Steve Giosa, SciTech engineering. With me tonight is Alan Clapp, who is the solar developer from Acushnet Solar, and legal counsel for the applicant, John Markey. This is a proposed solar project at 1050 Main Street, as was read into the record. We've outlined the property here, just for orientation, Main Street borders the site on the western side, north on this aerial photograph is to the top, or to the top of the drawing. We're basically between Leonard Street, which intersects Main, on the west side of Main Street, down just south of the site, and Clem's Way, leading into the Mobile Home Park, located just to the north of the site. The specific area in question, you can see on the plan, and I think it's important to note, it's an existing field, so it's a existing grassed area, cleared area, so this is not... A lot of the solar projects end up getting embedded in wooded areas, this is an area that's taking advantage of an existing cleared site, so we're not doing any tree clearing to facilitate the installation, but that'll give you a rough orientation of the, the property itself. What I'd like to do is start with just a brief overview of the property and some of the information we gathered to prepare the design. This is an existing conditions plan, again, for orientation, north is to the top, Main Street off on the west side of the property. What we did when we first started the project, we looked at a couple of things. The first thing we looked at is whether or not there were any natural heritage endangered species areas, we checked with the state database, there are none on this particular site. We then looked at resource areas, or areas that may be jurisdictional from a wetland standpoint. We identified three principal wetland areas, there's one on the far eastern end of the property, here basically at the top of the hill, and then there's a little plateau and flat spot. So wetlands have developed here at the far east end of the site. And then there's a wetland system that runs to the south, creeps onto the property here in the middle, and then a wetland system that goes to the north, and again, creeps a little bit onto the property. And you can look at the topographic features and you can kind of gauge why that happens. We have a flat topography here, which gave rise, so this wetlands slopes down, then it, the topography sort of bends this way and bends this way. And the same thing from this direction, there's a high point on the property roughly here. I'm sorry, roughly here. So here's the high point, all of this is sloping back down this way, and again, then we get into these flat areas that gave rise to the wetlands. We have gone through the conservation commission on this project, so we did file a notice of intent. They reviewed from a wetlands protection standpoint, and they actually have issued an order of conditions approving the project as it's been designed. But again, so that goes to the issue of resource areas on the site, we did a topographic survey, you'll see we did a series of soil testing through the property, verified it basically with the NRCS soil maps indicate, which we have hydrologic soil group C out here, which is a silty soil, which you might expect in this area, not great percolation rates. So you do have, again, a fairly dense soil structure up near the surface, and then the land does slope naturally back down towards Main Street here in the front. So for the project, what we are proposing is a solar project, it is a proposed 1.3 megawatt facility. Out of about the 36 acres of land we have here, we are occupying within the solar field around four acres of land. The, you'll see the way we configured the solar, we stayed beyond the crest of the hill, so the crest of the hill is here, we're actually on the down gradient side, coming back this way into the site. Again, same orientation. We are from Main Street, the sideline of Main Street, to the closest solar panels, about 560 feet away from Main Street, with the leading edge of the panels. And again, the topography is sloping downhill this way, downhill this way on the property. We looked at trying to maximize the panel separation from the wetlands, which again, is an overlap with your jurisdiction on impacts on the environment. And you can see the 100-foot buffer zone is here, so we've got a little bit of fenced in area in some of our access drive in the 100-foot buffer zone of the wetlands. And here it's primarily our stormwater management system, and a little bit of grassed area, and a little bit of the access drive, again, in the 100-foot buffer zone of the wetlands. With the topography kind of bringing the water down to this location here, we did propose a small, shallow stormwater detention system. So again, the water would collect, we have it so that it just naturally drains, holding the natural topography down, and then a little berm here, and a little outlet structure to control the water, and then let it bleed out naturally to the area to the, to the north, maintaining the existing drainage pattern. The calculations show a balance in drainage flows through the area, so we think that that satisfies stormwater management, and again, conservation did agree and provide us with a sign off. Because we're not doing any changes in topography for the majority of the site, we're really working with the natural grades, they work fine for this particular installation. We're doing a little grading on the access drive here, just to create a more stable slope condition, and a little grading on the access drive here, but all of this will remain existing topography, all of this, we're not changing the topography at all, we're working with that natural topographic feature of the land. Here, we're making a little bit of an adjustment to the grade, but not a significant adjustment, just enough to flatten the grade a little bit through here, so we can set our equipment pad up in this location on the site. Access to the property is proposed from Main Street, running along the south edge of the property, and then into the project, running through with a turnout here at the end. And we're proposing a little paved apron at the front, so that, we're trying to keep this as low impact as possible, so we've got a proposed gravel surface for most of the access, and then right at the end, so that we're not tracking dirt and gravel out into the public way, we do have a paved apron at the entry point to the project. Surrounding the site, we have a proposed seven-foot chain link fence, which is required for isolating the system, security, and safety of the, of the system itself. The fence is set six inches off the ground, so that real critters can still migrate back and forth, which is also something that we're asked to do by conservation and the environmental groups, so it's something we do on all the projects that we design of this type. So we have safe access, a gated entry point at this location here, fire department, police department would be provided with a Knox box at that entry point, so they would have access to the site in the event of having to come in on an emergency basis. We are proposing an evergreen buffer on the Main Street side, and wrapping around onto the north side of the site. Again, we're trying to provide some supplemental buffering of the system in those two areas, and we think that would be an effective method of handling that. We know that, we made an initial presentation to you folks about a month ago, and we also made a presentation to conservation, we had a number of the neighbors who are here tonight, who are also at that meeting and expressed some concerns about the flow of water and the existing drainage along Main Street in particular. After that meeting, I took the opportunity to go out to the site, I happened to go out there on a dry day, but just to get a better feel for the topography and what was really going on there. But we get some nice rain this morning, so I actually went out there this morning, took another look at the property. I did take a picture, so it'll be easier to, and I'll clip one to the exhibit here, it'll help. People in the stand, and I have a few copies I can distribute to the board members. This is a photograph taken this morning, I'm parked on the side of Main Street, right about here. You'll see a utility pole here, that's this utility pole next to the mailbox, so that's red, this location here on the site. And this is the edge of pavement of Main Street, and you'll see a couple of features here, you see some puddling of water here, which the neighbors have identified. But also, if you look at the picture, and one of the neighbors, I think the gentleman who lives across the street, indicated a number of years ago, this water that's now pocketing here had the ability to keep traveling south along Main Street, and didn't really pocket in this area here. Somewhere between, I mean, I'm sure the time period, the land next door was filled, so that's this south of Butting property. So what you're looking at, this house is located on this property here, the stone wall you see here is this stone wall here, well, this is now a retaining wall, so the grade here is elevated several feet above the grade, just onto the applicant's property here. And that filled land comes all the way down, you can see pretty close to Main Street here. And so there's actually a gradient back towards the property here, and there's no mechanism for water to migrate in a southerly direction through here. If it ever did, that option is long gone with the installation of this retaining wall and the filling on the south side of the wall. What I did observe today is, again, a couple of pockets on the applicant's property, so the impact is to the applicant, it's their land and it's pocketing there. This has a gradient away from Main Street, and there's a little bit of a rise all along the edge here, and you can see it's washed out here, it's a little, just a little gravel strip, one or two feet wide. Clearly, people pull off the side of the road, their tires create a little divot in the side of the road, and it actually comes, the water comes off the pavement, gets trapped in this little divot, some of it travels this way, you see a couple of points, and I noticed a couple of points where it kind of breaks off in this direction here, up in this location, I can actually see the water running down the side of the road and then bleeding in in a couple of spots, but some of it does travel along this edge, right along the edge of the road, and does stay out in this area here. So it's not the site water that gets out here, it's really the runoff from the road, travels along the edge. This, when you look at the site, and we did do a drainage analysis of that front area, and we identified the water from the property that kind of migrates down this area, so it's all of this area here, it's about six and a half acres of land, that migrates down and generally falls into this little depression that exists right here. That migration of water is gonna continue to migrate there after the development, it'll still collect there, but I think, again, we talked about, or one of the neighbors said, well, why can't you put a pipe underneath the driveway, maybe that'll help alleviate the water? Well, there's no place to put the pipe too, so you can see from the photograph, it's very clear, this drops in here, there's a little bit of a flow on the, on the very edge here that allows water from the street to continue running down, but that's about it. So I think the one thing we can do to improve our design a little bit is to provide some spot elevations and try and maintain this little, it's not really a gutter, but a gutter line, so that we're not blocking water here and diverting water into the public way by building our access drive. We'll have a negative slope away from the street and into the site, with just a little bit of a divot, that we'll maintain, so that if water is traveling along this edge, it will continue to travel along the edge, and we wouldn't be obstructing it. So I think by providing an enlargement of the entry point, it's really difficult to provide that level of detail on this scale plan, we'll, we'll provide the board at a subsequent meeting, a plan that would show some spot elevations that would maintain this kind of flow path here. And we did look at the impact of the access drive, I know that was a question, on this lower area here, we ran the drainage analysis, so the first plan I showed you is a contributing drainage area under existing conditions. We did provide calculations for proposed conditions, which is this plan here, and the flow paths associated with the runoff, with the creation of the driveway, it kind of splits the flow paths up into a couple of breaks. And when you look at that, the end result is we're not increasing the peak rate of runoff to the front area, the flow is dispersed, and it is contained on the applicant's property. So we are not diverting additional water onto a Butters property, we are containing it on the site, and we think that there is no real opportunity to come out here, but we did want to make sure we represented, that we did look at that after the last meeting, because we know it's an important issue for the neighborhood, and we think we can make some improvements in our design with a little bit of grading detail along the edge here. So we do want to provide that to you, again, after this meeting, we get your comments. We know we have some comments from some of the departments, we've started... We've started discussions with people in town. The applicant has spoken with the fire chief regarding the cistern that Fire Department is looking for on the property, so they're working out, or they've at least started an initial discussion on that particular issue. There's a request to provide a turnout somewhere in the middle of the site. We're thinking this is the ideal spot for it. We have a broad area, we're not proposing any panels, no grade changes, topography's pretty flat. So we think this will be a good midpoint, so we'll have a turnout at the end and a turnout in the middle of the site. And we think that'll address the particular concern that has been raised. And I think that's a brief overview of what we're proposing. We know this is your first opportunity to look at this, so we'd be happy to try and answer your questions.
As this being a public hearing, we will first ask any gentleman on the board to speak and ask any questions. And we will ask the public, they can speak and ask any questions they want. Okay? With that, gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask?
Where is the tree line on that side of the property?
The east side? The existing tree line is here.
At the Rochester line up there too, right?
That's a bit further, yeah. It's still quite a bit further, actually, but yeah, the tree line, for whatever reason, is actually embedded. It's a little marsh, open field, wet area, but the woods are beyond that. So we're probably not within...
Usually, the farmers went out as far as they could till it got too wet to support a field anymore. That's typically what would happen.
And this driveway is going to go between the mailboxes and the prison stone wall, correct?
That's correct.
Gentlemen, feel free. While you're doing that, do you want me to read this stuff? I have a bunch of stuff from Board of Health, Conservation, Police Department. I don't think there's anything...
Yeah, we've seen those letters, we do have copies of those. The building inspector sent a letter, I believe. I didn't see the conservation, we did see Board of Health and the fire chief's letter. And I think somebody from the Police Department as well. We have seen that.
On your entry roadway, is that going to be elevated a little bit to keep it out of the ponds that happen there every time it rains? To keep it out of the ponds, that's where, that's the ponding area.
Yeah, the grade here is raised up about a foot and a half above. The ponding area is around elevation 42, we're at 43 with the...
Tempting the pond on the other side of the driveway.
It would shift the ponding area over a little bit, a little bit, yeah.
To the north.
To the north.
That's it? No questions? Go right ahead.
So this is a gravel road?
Other than the apron in the front.
So you won't have sheet flow coming down the driveway?
That's correct, we're pitching everything to the side, to the north. So we're pitching it away from the south of the butter, pitching it to the north. And yes, there won't be a focusing of the flow.
How much is that out top from Main Street in, roughly?
I think we have a dimension on the largest...
Fifty feet or 100 feet?
I don't think we were going, I think we were going about 50, but I don't think, it definitely wasn't 100. We wanted to keep it enough that, when you look at the operation of these facilities, the vehicles that come in long-term are pickup trucks or passenger vehicles, so we don't need a big apron to make sure that when they accelerate to go out there spinning their wheels or causing a problem. I don't have a scale on me, but this is, when it shows 40 feet, so this is probably about 40 feet in.
Are you going to be bringing poles down this driveway to connect?
Yes, here's the equipment pad up in this area here. And then the poles come down on the north side of the access drive, and the interconnection would be to that existing pole near the mailbox, as you see in the picture.
Has EverSource been questioned about possibility of an interconnect there at all? Has that happened yet?
Yes, absolutely.
What was EverSource's initial response?
Well, we made the request about three and a half years ago. It's been a battle and a half.
It's moving right along.
But we actually have a signed interconnected service agreement.
You do?
As we speak, we do.
Oh, wow, okay.
However, they just alerted us, maybe two months ago, they're doing a transmission study, which includes this substation with other substations. The ISA is simply a study up to that substation based on what we're proposing. And that's okay, that part's good. This is new information, a new study, so I don't know where they're going with it.
God bless you.
They couldn't get anyone out of there, so they have to commission another site.
Four doors, I don't know what they do.
Gentlemen, any other questions from the board? You have all these, you don't want me to read them in, Building Department, Board of Health, the Cushing Police, Town Conservation?
We have everything.
Okay, good. With that, is there anybody that would like to speak, throw a con from? Please introduce yourself and help yourself, sir.
I do, my name is Dan Barbosa, and that mailbox is mine.
Okay.
Okay. Luckily, you come down on a day after rainstorm, and there's nothing but mud out there, because we have not had any freezing weather. Usually, this time of year, that water goes from the stone wall to the driveway. And I mean, a lake. There's ducks, there's everything else living in there. Now, you're going to put up a driveway and a road, which is going to stop that water from going anywhere except into that lake. And guess where that lake goes? Underground to my cellar. I run sun pumps, too, 24/7, for weeks after this, in the spring.
Do you live...
I live directly across the street, right where that mailbox is, directly across the street.
And based on the drainage, I can agree that the water comes down there and it pockets there, there's no question.
Oh, it does, believe me. And like I said, you came down after a little rainstorm and you saw puddles already. Imagine two feet of snow, frozen ground, and all of a sudden it starts to thaw. That water sits, goes underground, my cellar, and my next-door neighbor's cellar. It's okay with you, you don't mind that, right?
No, no, sir.
What I'm saying to you is that years ago, there was a COVID. There was a COVID.
This is for the board to hear your comments.
Okay.
And, you know...
He went down there and said that, "Oh, I saw a little puddle."
I understand the situation there. I mean, I've watched that house go in next door.
And they filled in the COVID.
Been in town a long time, I understand that that and the property at the corner of Peckham and Main, I mean, that's habitually...
Leonard and Main.
Leonard and Main, sorry, yeah, I mean, there's always a pond there practically. I understand, and so your concern is that this project will make that even worse for you across the street.
Absolutely. Well, what I was saying is, years ago, there was a COVID that ran from that field all the way down past those two houses into the next field.
Before the two houses were put in, correct, sir?
The two houses that, where that stone wall is, that house and the next one over. There was a COVID that ran down, and the water ran down there. I never had water in my cellar until they started building those houses in there and filling in the COVIDs. Now he's going to put a tar driveway in, which has got absolutely no place for that water to go. Water does not run north, doesn't run north, it runs south. You block the south exit, where's that, that little thing you're talking about alongside the road, between the road and the mailbox? That, you'd have to have a flood for that water to run. Believe me, I've been there for over 30 years and I know where that water runs.
I agree with you.
Okay, I mean, that's what we're here, is to hear that, to hear that comment.
I don't know, it's going to be their responsibility or the town's responsibility to do something with that.
Is that something we will take into consideration?
We'll take that under advisement.
Because I know even across the street where you, that puddle is there, across the driveway on the other side of the puddles too, right? The driveway going up to the hill, the house on the hill?
No, because that hill's like this.
I understand, but the...
The water runs from that stone wall, I've seen that water probably... I'm going to say maybe 30 feet from the road, solid water from the wall to that driveway.
And then on the other side of the driveway?
And on the other side.
I just, I got the right house.
Yeah, you got the right house.
Anybody else? Please feel free, raise your hand. Yes, ma'am, just introduce yourself.
My name is Irene Piers, and I live at 1020 Main Street. And my property is inside that retaining wall.
She's his property here.
Yes. So I have the same exact issues, even with that wall...
This is your property here, ma'am?
Yes.
That, the house with the stone wall?
Yes.
Okay.
So the issue there is, is the water going into my basement. That retaining wall does not block the water from going into my property. And I can tell you right now, there's water in my basement. And once the spring comes and all that water has no way to go, it's going to be even worse.
Anybody else? Feel free, please.
And can I just say one thing?
You certainly may, ma'am.
And it's not just the issue of the water in there, and no one's brought up also the solar farm, just the way it's going to lower our property values. I mean, I'm the one that's going to be waking up every morning looking at it. It's right next to my property, and I'm sure none of you have that issue. Would you like to wake up every morning and look at a solar farm right next door?
I understand what you're saying, but I believe the way the industry is today, you cannot stop solar projects.
There's not even enough research...
I understand.
On the safety of them.
We can, what we can do is, we can condition the use or condition the stuff that happens around the solar panels. But the state has basically made freestanding solar panels like this and allowed use. So we can't tell them they can't do solar panels on that property. We can, but we'd go to court and we'd lose, because the state considers that an allowed use of the land. We can look at things like drainage, we can look at things like screening, but we can't say no. That's my knowledge, am I correct, Henry?
That's correct.
So why even have a public hearing about it?
Well, because if there's something we can do with the driving, with the driveway, if there's something we can do with the drainage to at least not make the situation any worse, we've got to make sure that that's what we do. I mean, the drainage situation there has been there a long time. I was there before 30 years ago. I remember when that driveway went in and that house went in, and immediately there started to be ponds there. I understand that. And all we can do here is make sure that this property is not going to make it any worse. But if nothing happens, you're still going to have water in your cellar, you're still going to have water across the street.
Not if they put a COVID in it, not if they COVID that back the way it used to be 30 years ago.
Unfortunately, it's something that should have happened 30 or 40 years ago when that COVID got cut off.
We had them dig it up once.
In front of this house, sir?
Yes. When they, after they built it in, the neighbors, we get together, we call them, we get the town down there, and they dug it up. And it was all better again, for about two years, and then they solely filled it back in, and here we are, back again. So I mean, what you're saying now is that no matter what happens there, I'm screwed.
Well, whether without this project, that's still going to be the same situation. What we can do is, we can, as a board, we can ask the highway superintendent if there's anything under his control that he can do to help that situation.
But I'm just saying, that's going to get worse with that the way it is. Because now that water's got no way to go.
It doesn't have anywhere to go now, except those two low points. I mean, and that's never going to change. We will ask the highway superintendent if there's something that can be done to restore the flow the way it used to be before that house went in. And I mean, that's the best we can do. There are some areas in town that are wet. And that's wonderful.
Anything else, folks? Please feel free.
I have one more question, just for him particularly. What happens to solar panels when they become obsolete? Because all the wind power pretty much is gone.
That we can answer here, you know, and there is a fund that they have to establish before they even build their first solar panel. That covers the demolition of the project once it happens. That's the answer.
I see that being pretty much done in about 10 years.
Yeah, in any case, there is a, they have to put money upfront to cover the demolition of it, if it becomes not viable anymore. They don't like it.
There's 36 things they have to go through to put the solar farm in, and that is one of the 36. What do they call it, decommissioning? Anybody else? Please feel free. Gentlemen on the board?
Now, if you've got a concern, now's the time to tell us.
I understand their concern, I'm not a resident of decommissioning, I understand. They're concerned about solid tar, what if they used regrind tar? The drainage would go through, wouldn't it?
You're right. We'll take care of that. They can't increase the amount of runoff going off the scene right now. And whether they've got to do it with regrading, whether they've got to try and hold it on their own property before it gets out to the road, that's one of the things that we'll be discussing as the project gets further along.
Anybody else? Please feel free. With that, we will end this public hearing and continue it. That's what we have to do till March 19th at, let's see, 7:15, is that okay with you guys?
That's fine, sure.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing and continue at the next meeting? For a second? All in favor? Aginamous? With that, we will continue this on March 19th at 7:15 PM.
Thank you.
More than welcome. Being 7:30, we're running a little late, but not too bad, folks. Public hearing, solar special permit and site plan review, Zero Wing Lane, CVE North America, Atlantic Designing Engineers. Please feel free, gentlemen, to come up and show us what you've got. Where are you heading for now?
I feel like I'm ready.
You're not heading south again? You're not heading south again? Come on in, gang, let me see. Hey, Clark?
How you been, straight?
You too. You've begun enough to introduce yourself, gentlemen, to us?
Brian? I thought you needed us, so I'm the one who...
Wait a minute, I have to do something, hold on.
Did I, or...
Oh, yes, I spoke to Alex.
This being 7:30 PM, this Cushing Plan Commission notice a public hearing. Site plan review and solar special permit for Zero Wing Lane, Solar Project 2, CVE North America. Notice is hereby given that the Cushing Plan Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February 27, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the planning office. 130 Main Street, Potting Way, second floor. This meeting is being... This meeting is being held to process an application for the site plan review and special permit for a solar array proposed by CVE North America at Zero Wing Lane. The engineer is Atlantic Designs Incorporated. The plans and accompanying documentation may be viewed at the town clerk's office, one thirty Main Street, Potting Way, first floor during regular business hours. This was in the paper February thirteenth and February twentieth, twenty-twenty. Is there a motion open the public hearing on Zero Wing Lane?
Both can go for the public hearing. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, please feel free to introduce yourself and tell us why you're here.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm Ryan Young, I'm with, uh, CVE, the applicant. This is Nick with Atlantic Engineering. He's our, uh, the engineering firm helping us out. Just by a real quick way of introduction, um, CVE is a renewable energy company. We mostly do two to five megawatt type projects that are for community solar. So, we build all renewable plants right on site, and then we sell the power. Our subscribers can buy into the system in the, within the communities, residents and businesses through our program called Halo, halo.com. So, we, we produce it right on site and then sell it right back to the community with, through a subscriber system. Uh, and this will follow that model for, uh, both of these projects. Uh, we've done about three hundred megawatts worldwide, and we're doing about, we've got about sixty megawatts in Massachusetts that we're working on, and also projects in New York. And this project is sort of a continuation, I mean, I think, uh, many people might remember, uh, this is sort of known as the Rocket, um, project, as he built and developed the first project on Zero Lane. So, if you're heading south and, uh, you're crossing, this is the, uh, transmission line and easement that sort of crosses the property and across. Um, so if you're driving south, this map's a little bit hard to see because of the, uh, it's not distinct between what's to be built and what's already built. This is the already built section here. Uh, storage trailer, inverters, and this is the driveway off of, um, Zero Wing Road. So, that was built in about twenty sixteen, it permitted. Uh, it's energized, it's connected to the grid right here, and, uh, again, providing power right back to the community. Um, we purchased the property, the entire property, from the Rocket and the estate, uh, last year. And, um, and looking at the design of what the site is and what could be here, uh, we felt it makes pretty good sense to add some additional capacity here, uh, on the southern side. It's next to the substation here. Really, ideally, we're just looking at solar development, energy development. Sort of an ideal site, cause it's already cleared, it's flat in terms of water drainage going on each side. Um, it's also right underneath the power lines, next to the substation, and, uh, next to the, uh, extraction site here. So, not a great site for housing, um, but probably, if you're looking at sort of land use planning, this is probably a better site for energy development. That's the way we feel about it. So, that's why we've put together a plan to, uh, add some modules on this side of the property. In terms of size, cause I know it's one thing a lot of people ask, these two are about the same size in terms of the energy output. This is a little bit smaller because in area, uh, it's only about a two acre site here. But the rated capacity of each panel is a little bit higher than on this side. So, these are about two hundred fifty, closer to four hundred watts a panel. So, that's why they're both about, um, point five or half a megawatt, point five megawatts or five hundred KW. One difference I'd like to point out between the two, if you were comparing them, is that if you're looking at this site, this site has a, uh, under each racking unit for about twenty panels or so, there's a concrete ballast. And, uh, we don't think we have to do that on this side. It'll be more of a standard, uh, still a steel rack, and there's a ground screw that will hold that down. So, uh, more environmentally friendly, less impact, easier to pull away. When the project is decommissioned, the ground screw pops out of the ground and, uh, we don't have to worry about the concrete, plus impervious surface, things like that. So, I think it's a better racking system there. One thing that's changed about the project since our application is that we're considering doing battery storage here, and, um, it's not really practical, so, um, we'll like to restrict that sort of from the application, and that'll change as we, we have the preliminary concept plan now that Atlantic put together, but as we start working and, and building the civil set and the construction plans, the, uh, storage will, the storage component will disappear. So, that helps a little bit in terms of, uh, construction and maintenance of those batteries. We don't have to worry about that on the site. Nick, do you have anything else to add to that?
You did mention the storm wire, it's pretty flat. Everything drains for the most part from the middle of the site down here, uh, to the south. There's a small little pocket that, um, drains this direction. There's a shed. That's gonna be removed, um, located around here, right there. And then there's the berm, like you said, that runs right here, uh, that we would tap through the access. It was brought up in the comments that the, uh, we need to extend the tracking path from fifty to sixty feet. Um, we did show that on this, didn't impact anything. And because of the size, we didn't need to, um, worry about anything from storm wire because there's very minimal impact.
Where is the existing interconnection right now?
Right about here, um, sort of overhead utility heads up these poles.
Now, what are all the buildings down, uh, on the south side?
This?
Yeah, all of them. Yeah, there's several buildings there from that.
This is all, um, EverSource's, uh, substation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Solar power and the feeders come out here, and, and this project will connect.
Alright, so the nearest house is the one up at the end of Wing Lane. Is that, is that a house or a?
This is the old barn, this is the old.
Yeah, I thought it was an old barn. I remember walking out there one time.
Don't tell them where he is. That's the whole point.
Gentlemen, any questions? You guys are all set with your presentation?
I think so.
Gentlemen, as before, the, uh, we'll ask questions, then we'll go to the public, and the public can ask all the questions that they would like. Gentlemen on the board?
I already butted in with my questions.
Henry?
I would note that, um, CVE came in and made a presentation to the, um, department heads, uh, last week, and I expect you've received some feedback from them. If not, you should be receiving letters. We would need copies of those, uh, that correspondence.
Okay.
As you get it.
Do you expect it'll come to you or to us directly?
I think it's gonna come to you directly.
What was that correspondence from?
In, in the same way that previous solar developer had, uh, you would receive letters.
Right.
You'll be receiving letters from fires, who is ConCon. We may or may not, were we CC'd on that? Or was it directly what?
Uh, Conservation Committee, just comments for the planning board. Building Department, so you got anything from the Building Department?
Yes.
Maybe nine things, sound right?
Yep.
Yep.
We actually addressed those two.
Board of Health, Stormwater Management, you get that one?
Yep.
And the bill for the egg. That's it.
So, that correspondence would be what?
Okay.
You, right, uh, copies that to us.
No problem.
Is there any Conservation Commission filing with this?
No, my understanding is that because of the, because there's no wetlands out here, you don't have to.
Okay, that's fine, that's why I'm asking.
If you want me to read it in, I'll keep reading it in if you want the Conservation thing.
No, no, that's all right. Ask questions, they're here, I'm asking questions.
And she, we did talk about the project with, uh, Mary Lee.
Right, yes.
Yes, and, uh, so she isn't aware.
Gentlemen?
Have you, have you got an interconnect permit?
Yeah. Yeah, we're actually doing fairly well. This is the one feeder in town, um, but, uh, because of, because of the location, we have not signed it yet, but they've, uh, sent us the draft and we'll sign it in weeks, so this is actually.
Okay, so that's what we're on.
Yeah, yeah, and the, uh, the, uh, transmission study for the last project was talking about, that won't, um, impact this project, so we should bring it in.
Gentlemen?
I mean, that's been, that's been the stumbling block on, uh, many of the other projects, is getting an interconnect agreement with, uh, with EverSource. Without hundreds of millions of dollars of expensive work, or tens of millions anyway.
You guys all set? Anybody from the public or against?
Are you abutting the tree line?
Just please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Michelle, I live right down the street down. No, I'm in the woods.
Off the map.
Yeah, probably. I'm right. Um, are you going right up into the tree line there, or are you coming in, or you're not taking any trees down?
No, we're, um, only, I think what, what'll happen is there's some, uh, overgrowth on, on the Zero Wing Lane side of the property, so that will need to be removed a little bit, but I think there's more scrub than trees.
There's just a little corner right around here, where that shed's gonna come out.
With all the garbage.
And then, yeah, and then right around there for that corner.
And maintaining the setback, uh, thirty foot.
Yep.
So, you're gonna extend the berm too? The berm that's already there? Cause once the bond comes down, that's all, there's no berm in that area.
Right.
We're gonna have panels.
Yes.
In that area, so you're just gonna extend the berm.
And privacy screening here as well. And we know there's an issue with some dead stuff here. We, CVE intends to, just for point of reference, CVE, a lot of developers, uh, build and then sell. That's not really our model, so we're gonna own the property, own the project, uh, for the next twenty to forty years. So, we try and invest and maintain and do the upkeep that's needed, so. You should see some permits here with vegetation. It's not gonna probably be the spring because of construction and things like that, but, um, tying the, the tree plantings and the berm into our existing construction in the maintenance area, we've got to take care of.
How soon do you plan on starting?
Uh, it depends on, uh, the process here for application. We need to sign the interconnection agreement, and then we need to work on, um, signing a construction contract. Buying panels right now is very difficult because of, uh, a lot, a lot of reasons, tariffs and coronavirus. Uh, so, all that could impact it, but I mean, potentially, we could potentially be building this summer or fall. Well, it depends, but.
Uh, Donald Clark, do the panels all come from China?
Uh, some of the parts are manufactured there, um.
The panels themselves?
Yeah, uh, some of the, the panels, um, come from Asia, but not necessarily China, right now. Variable, but, um, just.
You, do you, I imagine you have future plans to do on the other side of the street?
For this side?
Yeah.
So, we, yes, that's correct, and, um, we have a permit that's already approved for eighty-eight Wing Lane. That's been, that permit's been around for many years, but we sort of, uh, re-upped it, I guess I would say, or reapplied and, and received that permit, so, uh, it might work out. And it's sort of just in this field here, there's a giant wetland complex that crosses across here, and then goes to the back. And the whole property's eighty-eight acres, but, uh, just on this nine or ten acres here, same thing on the south side of the transmission line, that'll be a project there too.
Down.
It'll probably, it might be constructed at the same time, depending on all those factors I just said. Yeah, we're getting closer with that one too.
Yeah, that's like eleven acres of.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there. Uh, Nick and the team are just finishing the survey now, but, yeah, depending on how you slice it and where the setback for the wetlands that we're maintaining, uh, yeah, it's twenty ten of all acres.
All right, Joe Costa, how much, um, traffic is that gonna involve?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, over the life of the project, very little. Because you're, you know, uh, these things kind of maintain themselves. Uh, so, you know, our engineers and maintenance teams only out there, could be once a year, could be twice a year, and it's just a small pickup truck going out to check out things. During the construction of the project, for the first month or so, um, it's a little bit more, uh, delivery of equipment. Uh, there's not a lot of excavation or tree removal on this site, so that's good. There's not a lot of earth moving. So, uh, I think in this project, uh, it's gonna be pretty minimal. But, I mean, it's true that the main flow of traffic will be during that construction period.
And, and like you said before, you're gonna extend the berm that's there now down to the, like, um, where you're going to the electrical, uh, project?
Yeah, that access road.
Yeah. Who's gonna maintain that berm?
We will.
You guys are?
Yeah, yeah.
Better than a.
I don't think Rocket even knew it was there.
Yeah, I think that, I think that was part of the issue that.
You gentlemen bought the whole, whole acreage, right?
Yes, uh, so we own everything in yellow here, uh, except for this. I think this is actually incurred. We'll have to look at that. I don't wanna represent that we own somebody else's property.
John across to the other side of where you're at too.
Yeah, so, but we own it this, and, um, we have an agreement to buy this, and we'll be buying eighty-eight, uh, Wing Lane in the next couple of weeks, so we are, so then we'll own the land on both sides.
Folks, feel free, ask all the questions you want. You've been through this one before.
How long's that part you gonna last?
Um, which one? Any of them?
The one you're doing now?
Uh, generally, um, it's a good question, uh, cause these projects that, I mean, I always say that these projects have not done long, you know, for twenty or forty years, but, uh, the engineers expect that they will last twenty to forty years, probably twenty years.
No, how long's construction?
Oh, construction, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'd call it two months.
Two months, it's gonna be done?
Um, no, I would say a two-month intense sort of construction window. I mean, they're gonna, you have a, of course, you have a period where they're gonna be dropping off equipment, and, you know, that could be a month before you actually start, or some equipment, or some excavation, so, I mean, it could be three months, four months for the entire construction period, but there's delivery times, and then there's sort of lag times, and then there's the, uh, on this side, there's a battery construction time. So, I mean, it's, it's difficult to say how long it will actually take.
And those two projects, uh, one side over on the other side, you guys can build independent from each other?
It'll probably, depending on permitting and interconnection, um, it makes a lot of sense cost-wise to build them at the same time. I think it also makes a lot of sense, we're trying to be respectful of the neighbors, that, um, we can do it all at once and get the noise and the dust down. We're gonna try and do them together.
Now, I'm saying, the project that's there now, Rocket one, whatever.
This one?
Yeah. Is, and yours is the other one over there, right?
Did you gentlemen acquire everything Rocket had?
Uh, yes, we, we did acquire this on the.
Okay, so they own everything.
They have the whole complex.
Yeah.
They own everything.
Would you be fencing that all in as one big thing or two separate? Like, would that center be open?
There's a fence line that would run around.
It'll be separate, yeah. Now, do you know what's gonna happen to that middle piece, are you gonna like, cause last year, people would come in and hay it and cut all the grass down?
Yeah, those, those still may, maintain the same. Um, yeah, you can't really build here because of the easement.
Yeah.
Um, so, everything will stay the same in terms of wildlife corridor, in terms of hay management, as long as we can find somebody that wants it, that's fine.
Folks, any other questions? Please feel free, now's the time.
So, when, when, like, um, that's on, what side is that? South side?
That's on the west side.
West side, you're doing. So, when you're gonna go to, on the other side, on the east side? You have a permit also for that, right, to do?
So, for construction, they'll probably be the same.
You're not paying attention.
Yes, yes, I just checked it again.
Somebody just asked that question.
But I'm more, I'm more concerned with the future project, cause I live right in the back of that.
But he said they may be doing it together.
Yeah, together.
To try and cut down noise, dust.
But the other one's happening.
But that one's already, that one's already permitted, so we're really, all we're discussing tonight is the one in the corner.
They have to come back for the other one to receive the finish.
So, I gotta buy a longer extension cord from my house to the other project over there?
I'll set you up.
Did you get that on that one? Did you get that?
He didn't say there was any electricity going on.
Which way I'm being set up, I don't know, no.
Folks, anything else? Please feel free. Gentlemen on the board? Anybody got anything? With that, is there a?
Yeah.
You got anything, Henry? You all set? We've been through this a hundred times. Uh, is there a motion to close a public hearing and continue it on? You guys wanna come back on the nineteenth again?
Yep.
Okay, we'll make that at seven thirty. Zero Wing Lane. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and continue it on March nineteenth?
Sold.
For a second? All in favor? With that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This close the public portion of this meeting. With that, uh, what do we have? I have one more. Uh, Form A, six forty-nine Main Street.
If you don't get the answer the first time you ask, you ask it again.
Yeah, what's that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, it being 7:45, sorry, gentlemen, to keep you waiting a little longer. We have a Form A, 6.9 Main Street. Please feel free to introduce yourself and tell us who you are and all the people out on TV there.
I'm Dave Madigan from Madigan Homes of N. And I'm here tonight for Form A plan. So what we're doing here is to try to color, highlight it a little bit for you. We're basically cutting out a Form A lot out of the bigger green piece. So we're cutting out the pink parcel, which meets the frontage requirements, the area requirements. It's on a public way, it's vital access. And it meets all the board's requirements. And we've left remaining land here for possibly some future retreat lot or something to that effect possibly. So the purpose of tonight's is just to create the Form A. There is a house on it now, it's kind of a dilapidated house, it's going to be razed.
Yeah, we have a demo permit in place. We've filled it up.
That's the owner of the property.
So now, are you saying that the other lot is going to, is, meets the dimensional requirements for a retreat lot?
Yeah, we've planned it that way.
Okay.
What, I guess it was, oh, six?
Six point nine.
I'm sorry.
But what we didn't want to do, because I used to be on plan board for many, many years, is the retreat lot's a whole different process, different timing. I don't want to try to shove them both on the same plan and try to, because if you don't like one of them, then you're going to deny all of them.
Well, I mean, it's either, it's either a retreat lot or it's not a building lot.
Right.
If it's not a building lot, then normally we ask that it be noted so on the plan.
At this time, we've just called it remaining land. But in another month, it may be coming as a retreat lot.
Well, we, it definitely be coming.
It's all set up that way.
I mean, it's no big deal. I just, again, you know, sometimes these things are wanted off and it specifically says not, not a building.
Right.
So there clearly is two lots, I mean, a retreat lot and a normal.
Right.
How much frontage is there on the, see they proposed retreat lot?
60 feet.
Okay. That's plenty. How much upland, Nick? Do you have enough?
Uh, we did that also. So the area of the remaining land is 163,000 square feet. And the upland is 79,000. I don't remember off the top of my head when we were doing the retreat lot. I don't remember what the, what the upland, but it had one.
There's setback requirements and stuff.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, your, your wetlands looks like it's took pretty far to.
Yeah, and, and we had those delineated. Those were delineated by Sabatia. I don't know if you guys know Bob Gray?
Yeah, Sabatia. Trying to figure 6.49.
Yeah, like almost right across from Perry Hill Road.
Yeah, it's the old blue.
Right near the doll thing.
Old blue house with the top on the roof.
Oh, okay.
I know.
Not exactly what it is now, I think. Yeah, and I, I live on a retreat lot on Keen Road. So I understand the setbacks. You've got a down pat. Oh, oh, I like that.
So in this area, this area, this frontage, I mean.
You're just breaking out the red, the red pot, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Gentlemen, any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we both plan has submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? You would just give us all your checklist and everything so I can go through it so my secretary won't beat me up?
Yep.
Absolutely. We'll give that to these, who's got the magic pen?
I have my nine copies, but.
That's fine.
Okay.
We'll take that one. After, the only thing I can ask you is after you make. Page of the registry of D.
Yep.
You can have to call me so we can put it on our files, so we have it.
26?
27.
Two copies of this. I can't get rid of it, you see? She's had it all week, it's horrible.
Okay, that's, that's okay. What else would you like?
You got a couple copies of the application?
Yeah, we just. Form A, you got that stamp, that's on clerk.
Yep.
Yep, no problem. Designers, two back there. Check this. Yep, fantastic. Form A submission list, yes. Copy of non-refundable fee for the town clerk. Okay, I need to go. You got the machine working, Henry?
Uh, you can do that.
Are you sure?
Yeah, well, the machine's working. That just keeps it now working.
Oh, okay. You just need less work.
I'm sending all the two copies.
Yep.
What's, yeah, what's the rationale with that?
We got.
They're all originals.
They're all bad. He was a middle girl guy, so.
Well, we used to sign one for half of the racket and. And two, but.
No, they're going to give you money for it.
Yeah.
So you just do one ourselves.
Yeah.
Usually we print these out and they end up throwing away after losing them.
You know, the old guys are. That's good. I don't know what they're going to do with it.
What else do you want? Do you need those copies? I got everything. Yep, I took them. All right, it's all set. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It would be a lot too long ago that they fixed that house. And here it is, just falling down again.
Oh, they put all the top on the roof and everything they bring.
You should have seen it like, I don't know, six, seven years ago. I mean, the house was like this, it was caving in, they fixed it, and now here we are again. Except this time.
It's gone.
Give me 30 seconds, Jeff. Give me 30 seconds, I'll be right back.
You got 35, Matt.
I got 35, thank you.
Matter of fact, at one time, this was all owned by the same family. People with that log cabin. That log cabin, when they go build this off right here, they can poke their fingers right through the side. It's not bad.
Is it better now?
Not really.
No, I've actually never been there. And the whole big bike gets together, get together is the Merle. The rally's been Merle Beach or the Laconia or, or Sturgis.
Cedar.
I get, when I get time to ride, I want to ride. I don't want to stop.
It's like you ride that area for the week, you know?
Oh, absolutely. You know? It's, it's a great area to go.
Oh, absolutely. Every, every one of them are.
The, I think my favorite, my favorite states so far are Utah and Colorado. I love both of those. Less, light traffic, the beautiful scenery, just gorgeous.
Okay, that being, I think we're all set here for a little while. Let me just see, Lainer, update, Henry, let's see what you want to do here.
Discuss the modification to the zoning by law, is there anything? Right.
Just send in your package is correspondence from KP Law, which addresses the matter that was raised during the second session last week.
Well, we can't discuss that, so I can only look at.
It wasn't here. You got all that, what else do we have? Hold on, I'm trying to get my stuff together here. That's it. Discuss meat and sour extension, KP, that's all set.
Right.
Discussion to change advertisement for legal ads using neighborhood news. Prove this place to advertise, is that okay with everybody?
The, Don had done some research and talked to clerk about the potential for using an alternative.
Would cost less money, less advertising money, yep.
So it costs less and accomplishes the same objective, it seems like.
It's going to be, yeah. Each currently by towns and board of selectmen, ZBA, among others. Do you have anything, we need a motion to do that?
It wouldn't hurt, I think that'd be.
Gentlemen, would you make a motion to use neighborhood news to make our advertisements because it's cheaper?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? And town meeting set for May 11, 2027 PM, middle school, we're all set. And discuss purchasing a new copier. The discussion is we need a new copier, right? Is there a motion to get a new copier?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go buy a new copier, Henry. We need it, we're all set. Our next meeting will be.
19.
March 19th, starting at 6:30 PM. Anything you guys want to say to anybody? Anything out there, anything we got to bring up? We're all set. Thank you very much, folks. Have a great night, we'll see you in March.